Deli Moore.
Yes.
Harry Redeker.
Here.
Does it, or is it?
Counsel, we need to adopt agenda if I can have a motion.
Sub move.
My guard and second by Fox. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. One presentation tonight, Downtown Cape Girardeau CID 2018 Budget Review and Comment. This the first annual?
Um, well, yes. I guess it is. I guess it is. Um, Mayor, Council, I'm Marla Mills. I'm with Old Town Cape and we have been contracted by the Downtown Community Improvement District to manage the services for the district. Dave Hudson is the chair and then we have some CID board members or another CID board member, Lee Schlitt, is on the board as well, present. Here tonight. So mostly, we just wanted to come. We presented, per statute, the attentive budget for the upcoming fiscal year for the CID. We presented that a few weeks ago, along with some information about the, this most previous expenditures for this past year. Our fiscal year does run, just like the city, July through June. The services, just to give you a little bit of information about what the CID has engaged in since its inception, started collecting taxes in 2015. The first year was really spent mostly setting up the CID, the technical aspects, getting it all together, that kind of thing. So the fiscal year 16, we entered into the contract with the CID and started providing the services, including trash and litter. The three basic areas that the CID was formed on and provide services around are clean and attractive, safe and vibrant. And I've provided for you some information in each of those areas, the types of things that the CID is engaging in, the services they're providing, and how much they've spent both in the fiscal year 2016 and then to date for this year. Couple of things I'll note. You might notice, the fiscal year 2017, I've also provided information on tax collections. So for this year, we, there was an increase in revenue, which shows an increase in sales tax, which is good for the whole city. We're up almost 10% to date over last year, this same time year to date. So I thought that was interesting. We are working on some things to finish out this year in those same areas. And then, of course, we'll be planning a more detailed budget. Our next CID meeting is in May. And so with your report that I provided, we'd be happy, either myself or Dave, to answer any questions that you might have. You hired me. He said you, they hired me to answer the questions.
Oh, I see. When does the, that litter?
Where is it?
No. Yeah. When does that, what hours does that operate?
Um, he, we have a contract with a company called Cornerstone Facility Management and he uses a small machine, picks up litter on Saturday mornings and Monday mornings.
Saturday morning, Monday morning.
Mm-hmm.
Early?
Very early. He's out like at 4:00 a.m. So he tries to do it before any of the cars or any of the traffics there. And then we also have, in addition to that, Old Town Cape still does, we do once a week litter pickup with team challenge. So, and that's on Wednesday.
That's Saturday and Monday.
For, for the CID, correct. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on the specific services.
Response from downtown businesses? Worked through any issues, problems?
Yeah. The response has been good. Particularly, there was an article in the newspaper recently about, on the safety side, providing the police, pedestrian police patrols. That's been well received by both, all of the businesses downtown, from the bars to the, you know, to the restaurants, to the retail, and then also by the, the community at, at large. And that's probably received the most exposure. The other, all the other services have received other positive responses too. The marketing has been, has gone well, the, and been appreciated by the businesses. Overall, it's been very positive. It's, you know, it's, it's like anything else. It's taking a little bit of time to get everything moving forward and to try to get a sense of where, when the money's coming in, how it's coming in, and to actually implement the projects. But it's, it's very positive.
Everybody holding that pretty well with the Main Street structure and all that stuff that's going on?
The businesses on Main Street have had a very, very positive attitude. They have, of course, been impacted by the project, but they also are very positive about how that project will be beneficial to them in the future. So they've been very supportive of the project and very, we, as an organization, the CID, Old Town Cape, and the city as a whole, has been really trying to support promoting them through the project. But yeah. Yeah, yeah. The, it's, it's been a great, it's been ahead of schedule, so that's been great for everybody.
Been ahead of schedule all the way along.
Right, right.
I think they probably didn't get started today, but they, they were ready to start some street paving.
Yeah. It's moving really fast.
Yep.
Corner Burger's done a great job with it.
Yeah, great contractor. Any other questions?
I'll run you it.
I have one comment here.
Yes.
I'd just like to let you guys know that the CID's very happy with the work that Old Town Cape does and the contract we have with them. They take care of a lot for us.
Very good. Off and running. That's it. You can sit down, stay, enjoy yourselves. Communications, counsel. I think Fox has a couple of things.
Saturday, April 22nd, Friends of the Park Day is the annual park beautification program hosted by Cape Parks and Rec. They register at 8:30 at Capaha Park. Projects start at 9 o'clock and there's lunch afterwards at Capaha, I do believe. It's always a neat deal for the community and it's a neat deal for kids and families to get together and come out and help clean the parks up. And it's been a great program. So I would encourage you to register with the City Recreation Department if you have not. And I'm not saying you have to register, but it helps if you do. It gives them idea how many are coming. But that's number one on the agenda. Number two, Thursday, May 4th, the new sportsplex is opening in May. This is a ties and tini event. It is a fundraiser for the Parks and Rec Foundation Scholarship Fund. It's $20 per person. It's a preview event. David, I know you got some snazzy shorts and ties and tennis shoes and, and you'll be there with bells on, won't you?
You're going.
You'll be legal that night. They have heavy hors d'oeuvres, beverages in the caf bar, they'll have a DJ, they'll have a, if you want to form a team, and they have some competition with three-member teams doing basketball, free throw volleyball service and soccer shots. If you've not been inside this facility, it is state of the art. It's hard to believe that here in Cape Girardeau, we've got 121,000 square foot indoor facility with two full-size soccer fields, six basketball courts, beautiful wooden floor that converts to 12 volleyball courts, plus meeting rooms and a full kitchen in between. And it is nice.
State of the art.
It opens to the public on Saturday, May 6th. And the first event scheduled for Sunday, May 7th. How's that for getting things under going? They already have at least 24 events I know of scheduled the rest of this year. There may be more by now. John's going, it's more than that, maybe closer to 30. But when you think of all the people that brings to the city of Cape Girardeau for tournaments and everything else, and the hotel rooms it fills up, and the restaurants it fills up, it's big for our city. So it's a, it's a big, big, big deal. So please try to get out there if you can't get out on May 4th for ties and tinnies. Saturday, May 6th is the grand opening.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
I will step. We, last Thursday, dedicated Jim Drury Way. It's a segue from the, from the sports complex, the entry from Veterans Memorial to the sports complex, 500 parking places there. And through Mid-America and their donation of all the land there, we were able to create that 121,000 and a larger venue than we could've. And we have since named that entry street Jim Drury Way. And we were able to dedicate that last Thursday. Great event. Family was there. And I'm very proud and thankful and that we're great partners with the, with the Mid-America Drury family and all the Drury families as we, as we move on. Our hotel, restaurant extension is what, let that building be, come to fruition. Anything else? Don't, I don't, anything around here? Staff?
Just a couple items. We have the Capaha Field Ribbon Cutting is Saturday, the 29th, at 1:45, just prior to the 2 o'clock game. So if you want to come out and watch the first pitch thrown out, it's going to be a great day for that, to commemorate the partnership between the university and the city to produce this turf field that really has stepped it up a couple of notches for, for us at Capaha. Also, we got our fire apparatus in this week. I think we showed the videotape, which we're showing again now. And that's a great accomplishment. You just don't get out the catalog and say, I want five of these, do you? The process that Chief Ennis and his folks used involved everybody, all the way from firefighter through chief and battalion chiefs to figure out what was the best fit for us and what would help with the safety and our ability to, to make the calls over, how many calls per year?
About 5,000.
About 5,000 calls per year. What was the right match for our fleet to do that. Then you work with the company to order it. And then they made several trips to make sure that they were getting what we were paying for. And it culminated with the arrival. And there'll be some events coming forward for the public to be able to see up close what their investment was. So thank you, Chief, for that event and, and for all the hard work going into that. Also, earlier, we recognized Kevin Prester for his Silver Drop, Silver Water Drop Award and, or something like that. And also, Public Works employee Steve Cook and Todd Fulton for their Society of Sanitation Sludge Shovels, the five S awards. And so just notes, again, seems like every week or so, we're, we have employees or departments that are nominated for national awards. And to show us how professional your friends and neighbors that run your city are in what they do. That's all I got.
Okay. Remind counsel of the council retreat, our all-day retreat, 7:45 Friday at the Chamber of Commerce Office. Yes. Okay. One public hearing this evening. This is one that has been continued and we're ready to move ahead with this. A public hearing to consider a request to rezone property 201, 205, 207, 209, 211, 213, and 215 South Kings Highway from C2, highway commercial to PD Plan Development and for approval of the application and preliminary development plan for proposed commercial development. Public hearing is open. And I see Mr. Rhodes here.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Scott Rhodes. My brother and I own South Cay. And we've been working through this PD and redevelopment of the shopping center for the last few months. I have both my real estate attorney Nancy Brown and Chris Gaylor here, myself. If you all have any questions.
Questions? Counsel? This has been massaged. And we are ready to, we are ready to move ahead. So any questions over here?
I have no questions.
I just want to thank, thank you for bringing this to us. That's a corner that needed some help and it's going to get it. Thanks for your development there and your confidence in our city to, to do that.
I want to echo, that's a great visible corner in our community. And what you're doing really enhances that. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else to speak to the counsel on this subject? Okay, counsel, let's move to, in new ordinances, to item number 14, Bill number 17-54, an ordinance remanding Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau by changing the zoning of property located at 201, 205, 207, 209, 211, 213, and 215 South Kings Highway in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from C2 to PD, and approving the preliminary development plan for a proposed commercial development. Our first reading.
Sub move.
Sub move by guard. Seconded by Fox. Any discussion? Be a great new development. And those words have already been communicated to the developer and, and anxious to move ahead.
Thank you to Scott and staff for working through the issues that we've had and bringing this together.
Any other comment? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, done. Thank you. Anyone here to appear before the counsel on any item that is on the agenda?
All right. So I said, talked with Robbie earlier, said probably going over the 5-minute mark. I hope that's okay.
Depends on how far.
So, we have proposed to build a duplex with a steel structure. That duplex is going to be, I guess I already said it. The duplex is going to be 3,400 square feet, 1,700 square feet per side, three bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms, two separate HVAC systems, separate moisture capture system. And it's actually going to be probably the most efficient residential building built even by a private homeowner in the city of Cape Girardeau. I understand there's been some concern on your behalf on how this fits in with the surrounding neighborhood. I think it fits in very, very well. You know, it's, it's a lot that we've owned for a little while now that hasn't had a building on it for 25 years. We're looking to reinvest in that area. If you drive down that street, you'll notice, starting on the north end, moving south of that whole block, because we own everything except for one of the houses on that block, new siding, new roofs, new windows, new interior gut rehab projects. So we're really trying to put some investment into that area. I understand you guys are deciding on whether or not to do a 90-day moratorium on the building or use of shipping containers in, in construction. And I urge you guys to rethink that because that's going to hinder the initial $2 million of the projects we have, not including the recent purchase that we've made downtown, which we will end up having something planned for that as well. So you guys may wonder about the structural integrity of this building, but I've been in it before. You may ask how I've been in it. It's been built several times. I wish I was smarter to come up with something like this, but I'm not. So we took the engineering from them. We ran it through Bowen Engineering and a new foundation built, a new structural building built based on Cape Girardeau's building code. So this is actually your family room. As you can see, we stacked four containers in a cluster together, two next to each other to our top. We cut out what's the floor and the ceiling of some containers and the walls of other containers, leaving a massive structural beam down the middle with intention wires underneath to retain that snow load and that live load. Truth be told, our engineering suggests and proves that we actually exceed live load by over three times. We exceed snow load by three times. We're designed to withstand an F4 tornado when the one that went prepared the last week or last month was an F2. Okay? So structure shouldn't be a problem. I understand you guys don't like the way that shipping containers look. And we get that because we don't necessarily like the way they look too. And some applications are fantastic, not always. We're not trying to make enemies out of the streets that we build on. So this because of our inability to have a color-matched siding sample, because we're paying somebody to design something he's never drawn before. So this is actually a closer look at the wood siding that actually will be on the side of the building. So after these things are completely constructed, you won't even see the shipping container when it's finished. I understand you guys have a problem with structure. Well, a 3/4 inch 1080 welding rod on top, under a quarter inch flat stock bar welding the containers together, I'd put my money on that being more structurally sound than nail, nails and wood, you know? The metal, the shipping containers are built out, it's called Core Ten, which is a scientific name, but if you Google Core Ten, you would find it. Core Ten is designed to rust on the outside and it's designed to rust on the outside, not to look bad, but it's to rust on the outside to provide an ozone or an oxygen barrier. So that rust cannot penetrate through the container, which is why these containers can go from, for all over the world, hundreds and thousands of miles over 25 years. And they still end up looking like that. Where if you put anything else around the country, around the world with saltwater, storms, hail, snow, they're not going to come out looking as good as they have. We understand you guys are worried about what's public opinion. You know, what is public opinion? We don't know. Something like this hasn't been done before. Okay? But we have a Facebook post that the news is done. And the last time I checked, it was 495 yeses and 52 no's. I have 500 surveys that I paid some of my tenants to take downtown Cape at the mall and, and actually knock on some doors in the areas that we want to build on it. And the funny thing is, the proportions come back exactly the same. 91% of the people would be willing to live in it, or be willing to live in it. And actually, 94% of the people like the design. So moving forward, your 90-day moratorium, I understand, is because of your unfamiliarity with the building practice. But when you break it down, how is that structure actually built? A steel frame with an exterior wall and an interior wall, the load is built on the steel frame. Well, most of your commercial buildings are built like that.
Got some more time? I'm kind of on the roll here. You can, you can go ahead. I'll give you a couple more minutes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So the HVAC systems are 18-seater, all right? That's much higher than standard. In fact, it's actually more than the glass house that I remodeled. The windows are actually double-pane insulated storefront window. Those windows actually have a thermal break in the actual frame where that, where that, that molyan, as it's called, is actually filled with insulation as well. Okay? So one big problem, the shipping containers is actually built too well. It's tight. Okay? Well, then air doesn't come in and out. How do you control moisture? We do that by having a moisture capture feature and actually having interior holes in between the, the interior wall, which allows air to circulate through that cavity space. So typically, in construction, what you're built, what you're dealt with is a framed wall with your exterior siding or your exterior sheeting and your siding right on it and your interior drywall. When we go a step farther, we actually space our interior wall a half inch inside of that exterior wall. So what does that do? That decreases the chances that cold air in the winter and hot air in the summer are going to penetrate through that, through thermal transfer into the interior space. So we create a temper zone in between those two walls. So that decreases our utility cost. It decreases our, uh, I don't know. It decreases the utility cost for our consumer.
You must be getting to the end.
Slowly but surely. So we've got rooftop deck. So when we submitted our plans the first time about six months, about four months ago to the city, they asked us to make a change on how do we support this rooftop deck. So we didn't necessarily agree with the change, but we did it just to make you guys happy. So we re-engineered a secondary tier that just sits kind of in the middle on top of a, of a substantial footing, which then will carry that load through the exterior walls, the 4x4 beams, over the bathroom, over the closet wall, and load directly onto that post. So the live load on, on our porch is actually twice as much as it needs to be technically. But we understand that this is a learning process. Okay? You guys need to learn. We also need to learn. We're going to get into this and if, as thought, we've developed building practices to make it more efficient, to make it quicker. And we've probably made a mistake. We could probably figure out, okay, well, if we frame this wall this way, we might save ourselves a little time. But the point is, we are not only the developers, but we're also the builder. Okay? So we're going to own this property as long as, as long as we can.
So is, is this the rendering of the Washington middle?
That's the exact rendering of Washington middle.
Okay.
That was purpose-built for that site. And the reason we had to do it that way is because we had to work within the confines of build-off restrictions.
Yeah.
Okay? What I was trying to say is, our liability doesn't just stop when we build a building. Our liability continues because we're the builder. Our liability continues in the honor. And the last thing we want to do is start, trying to start a journey in Cape Girardeau, the last thing we want to do is have an accident. Last thing we want to do is have a floor that's not completely stable. You know, after we get this done, we want you all to come. You know, we want you all to walk around, we want you all to film. We want you guys to realize.
Well, this, this, this ordinance lets you do that.
Well, we understand it. We're not letting us do this. But what about the, what about the rest of the projects that we've actually planned? The problem that we've had is when we met with the city for the last month, okay? You guys had the project on the desk at the city for over a month and a half. And Tuesday's the first time we heard about any of it. So after meeting with city officials, okay, and finding out that we're allowed to do this, there's nothing that says we can't, okay? We're all of a sudden stopped. We've made a substantial investment. We bought the, we bought the biggest crane in Cape. We bought ground to actually be able to manufacture these things on. You know, we're not building these direct, we're not doing the cutting and the welding and the grinding on-site. We're doing them in a commercial area where nobody lives.
Okay.
Okay? So we have a substantial financial outlay to be able to build this efficiently and safely and quickly. We've already got two other projects planned. One is a commercial project that no one's going to live in. Okay? This stops that. And we were kind of hoping to have that done by the end of the city, by the end of the summer. And then the other one is a triplex on a lot we bought from a councilman, councilman who knew we were building shipping containers and we bought it from him.
Okay, very good.
So what I'm asking for is one of you, please vote no on this moratorium for 90 days. It doesn't mean that everybody's going to come out of the woodwork and do this. This took a year to design. Now granted, people might not take the care that we do, okay, in designing this to build one. But you can't hold us responsible for something that someone might do in the future. Right now, this is here and this is now.
Okay, okay. We're done.
Any questions?
No. Any questions, the counsel?
I have a comment on that.
Come on up.
My name is Richard Higgs. I've lived here all my life for 67 years.
Address?
What this man is doing here is fantastic.
Your address?
Now, let me ask you something. Can you build an underground home in Cape?
Can you build an underground home in Cape? Can you build an underground home in Cape?
Any issues? Y'all don't know?
I don't know. Earth in contact?
Or, you mean?
Okay. Can you build a dome in Cape? No, you can't. Either one. But this man here is trying to turn Cape into a city, not a town, which has been for years.
Okay.
I'll back him up 100% on what he's doing. 100%. Now, Mr. Bowen here, he's not here. I don't know why. I've been in the military for 24 years. I think the last issue you had was dysentery or something on these containers. Is that right?
This is the first time anything has come to us on this.
Okay. Well, evidently, I must be reading the wrong Facebook or either Southeast Missourian.
No, I brought up health hazards because of the research that I did.
Okay. Mr. Bowen was in the military 20, 20 some odd years. I was in for 24 years. There's a little thing called a radioactive. You walk into that container and it'll pick up radioactive. Now, my son is picking up a thing, which is in the medical field. He pick up a thing, then walks in there and tell what kind of, what kind of natural antibiotics or whatever is in, in these containers. So I think, right now, it's time to turn Cape into a city, not a town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One thing that I might add.
Go ahead.
There, there are facts and cons of this, that the majority of the manufacturers of these containers are in countries that don't have the rules and regulations that we do. They, it's fact, they are, some use lead-based paints, elements like chromite, phosphorus, and then that's just in the walls. Potential arsenic, chromium are apparently sometimes used to infuse in the wood. So with that being said, with that little health concern, I just feel like we need to do more research as a city before we are going to just open it up and just keep doing, and start doing this. And what this 90 days is, hold on, hold on. And what this 90 days does allows us to research and make a prudent decision on something that is new to all of us. That's all this 90 days does.
We're not, we're not, we're not saying no. Boys, 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 if you want to say something, you, you can. Come on up. Come on up.
I'll say something. We got it.
Just like I said, you know, the clothes that you have on, the shoes that you wear, the things you have home, at home, in your, in your home, in your car. You know, a lot, most of these things got here by shipping container. They just didn't pop into place. They just didn't pop into place.
Sure.
So, you know, you're making, to me, and my point of view, is you're just making a big issue out of nothing.
That's not right.
Well...
That's not right, boys.
Then, yeah, I think so.
We, we want to be sure what we're doing, not for you, for the city, for the future from now on, for everyone that comes in, that we have the right, we don't have it right now, that we have the right ordinances in place for the betterment of the city and we're not saying no to Boys Church or...
Well, these things have been built in Saint Charles, they've been built in, you know, all over the, all over the USA, all over the world.
We're Cape Girardeau.
Yeah.
We're Cape Girardeau. And if it's going to take us 90 days, it's going to take... And one reason we're doing that this evening in an emergency measure is that so we can start now, that we're not delaying it. Will it take 90 days? I don't know. I don't know. Anyone else to speak on any item that is on the agenda? Let's move to...
There you go. Quinn, you've already had your five minutes.
Yeah, you guys respond to what you said, plus the safety... So, Cape Girardeau, we have a current code on how to handle lead paint, correct? That's to either enclose or encapsulate, okay? The only problem, the only time we get into trouble with lead paint is when we begin to rough it up and expose it, correct? Okay, so that's why we're doing that with OSHA-approved masks, gloves, suits, the whole nine yards. So, by the time we get it to the job site, it's going to be completely encapsulated.
Okay.
So, the same chemicals that are actually Robbie talked about in the floor are the same things in ground contact lumber, which anybody with a concrete foundation has ground contact lumber in their house.
Okay.
We're going to cover the floor.
Appreciate it. Counsel, let's move to item...
Mayor, go ahead. I just want to make a comment. I commend them for the project they're doing because I think it's bold, it's innovative.
Absolutely.
And I have looked at, I've done a little research, you can do research online, you can watch DIY or HGTV and you see all of the different things people do around the country. There's even a home in the Hamptons on the beach made out of containers. That is fantastic. So, people are doing this all over the country. We're not doing this, this 90-day moratorium to stop development, we're not doing it to stop what you're doing. We're doing it like we're doing it tonight to allow you to continue and do this. What we don't want, and I trust what you're doing and I trust how you're building it and that's fantastic, not every developer does that, not every builder does that. We may have, you do this, somebody may come in and just want to put a container down and live in it in a neighborhood and we have no zoning, no regulations for that whatsoever. It's the other guys we're looking out for. Not every builder builds the same thing. You have some builders who build great homes and great materials and you have others that don't. And that's why we have building codes. We have building codes so everything meets a certain standard and it boils down to safety for the public and a lot of issues, whether it's electric, whether it's plumbing, I don't care what it is, what the codes involve. But those codes are there for a reason and we need codes for these. 90 days is not a long time to wait. The city to do a little research, to look at other communities that have these, see what special codes they've instituted to make sure everything is done right and done correctly. So, I don't think that's such a bad deal. I'm anxious to see your project. I'd love to watch it go up and love to be in it when it's done and see it and I'd love to see it on the front of a magazine somewhere saying, "Look what we're doing in Cape Girardeau." I think it's only the beginning, but you got to give us a chance to get things done right.
Hey, I will read Bill Number 17-52, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by imposing a 90-day moratorium on the issuance of building permits, construction projects using shipping containers as building materials. Bill Number 17-52, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by imposing a 90-day moratorium on the issuance of building permits, construction projects using shipping containers as building materials. Bill Number 17-52, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordnance, excuse me, of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by imposing a 90-day moratorium on the issuance of building permit, construction projects using shipping containers as building materials. This is an emergency, it's been read three times, looking for a motion.
Sub move.
By Guard, seconded by Fox. Discussion? This does not include the project as presented on Washington and Middle. That is, that will move ahead by this ordinance, is that right? Got it?
That's correct. It excludes projects using containers as building materials except applications received on or before Friday, April 7th of this year.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go back to consent agenda, Eric, if you'll take us through the consent agenda.
Bill Number 17-41, an ordinance renaming North Church Street to North Church Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance renaming North Church Street to North Church Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill Number 17-43, an ordinance annexing unincorporated land into the city limits of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri located at 484 Limbaugh Lane upon the request of Thomas T. Fitzgerald and Barbara Ann Fitzgerald. An ordinance annexing unincorporated land into the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri located at 484 Limbaugh Lane upon the request of Thomas T. Fitzgerald and Barbara Ann Fitzgerald. 17-45, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning property located at 484 Limbaugh Lane in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri as R1 single-family suburban residential district. An ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning property located at 484 Limbaugh Lane in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri as R1 single-family suburban residential district. Number 17-44, an ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward 4 to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward 4 to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-51, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreement with HMHP LLC to place a fence on right-of-way located at 505 at Palmzy Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Counsel, you've heard the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Sub move.
Sub moved by Guard, seconded by Fox. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, new ordinances, number eight, Bill Number 17-46, an ordinance accepting the permanent sanitary sewer easement from South K Inc. for the Dollar Tree Project located at 201 South Kings Highway in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Sub move.
Sub moved by Guard and seconded by Moore. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Has to do with the future development of our planned development at South K. Number nine, 17-47, an ordinance amending Schedule A of Section 26-228 of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing the speed limit along in the city, in the Independence Street, Gordonville, and East Rodney Drive roundabout, first read.
Sub move.
Sub moved by, and seconded by Fox. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All of these are cleanups of the Independence Roundabout project. Number 10, Bill Number 17-48, an ordinance amending Schedule C of 26-121, Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by repealing stop signs, intersections of Independence, Gordonville, and East Rodney Drive, first read.
Sub move.
By Guard and seconded by Moore. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 11, Bill Number 17-49, an ordinance amending Schedule K of 26-121, the Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing yield signs at Independence, Gordonville, and East Rodney Drive roundabout, first read.
Sub move.
By Guard, seconded by Fox. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 12, Bill Number 17-53, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 26-135, the Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing a one-way street in the Independence Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive roundabout, first read.
Sub move.
Sub moved by Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Guard. Those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Number 13, Bill Number 17-50, an ordinance amending Schedule G of Section 26-249 of Code of Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by amending two-hour parking along a portion of Fountain Street, first read.
Sub move.
Sub moved by Guard, seconded by Moore. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Counsel, we have two appointments tonight, appointment to the Airport Advisory Board and for our discussion at our study session, that'd be the reappointment of Mark Walker and Brian Ozark and the appointment of Joe Hobbs and Jeff Rooney, if I could have a motion.
Sub move.
By Guard, seconded by Moore. Any discussion? Very encouraged having two very strong new members of the airport board as we move toward furthering the foundation efforts at the airport. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And a reappointment to the Board of Adjustment and that would be William Whitlock.
Sub move.
Sub moved by Guard and seconded by Fox. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other business come before us?
I can make a motion to adjourn.
By Guard?
Second.
Seconded by Moore. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?